All right, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four's regular meeting of the West Dakota Water Development District Board. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Is that what you'd like, please?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is a roll call of the members. Dan?
Okay, roll call for December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Coth?
Here.
Bjorki?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
McGregor?
Here.
Rowe?
Here.
Mack?
Here.
Care? We have six members present. We have a quorum. That means a two, a majority vote is four. And a two-thirds vote is four, Mr. Chair.
Okay. For those folks that came in at the start of the meeting, we do have a sign-in sheet. Does everybody see that and sign in? Okay.
And there is a restroom in back here.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of today's agenda. Are there any items on the agenda today that any requires any adjustment or changes? If so, speak now. Dan?
Do we have an item here for the director election for rural water system? Do we need to vote on that as a?
Oh, the one that?
As a board for Jay's reelection for Mr. Mills?
I would say we do need to take action on that.
I don't see anything on the agenda, so I would move that we put that on the agenda for the meeting today. The board's casting of its vote for the Class C Director for the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems.
Okay, should we put that under as item number twenty?
Fine.
All these other items? Would that be a satisfactory?
That'd be fine.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda, Dan?
So I had emailed that I had requested to the Executive Committee an agenda item for an update on erosion control activities, and my email stated I could simply do that as part of what's item number eleven, if that's acceptable. First give an update before?
Under item number eleven?
Right. That would include?
Okay.
An update on erosion. So I don't think we need to modify that agenda, I just?
You'll handle that under your?
Right, I'll just?
Item number eleven.
Right, I'll just do an update before I actually move into the voting item.
Okay, any other items that need to be adjusted or added? Seeing none, I would recommend that?
So moved.
I think we need a second, don't we?
Oh.
He just, he's moving right now.
I moved to approve.
The agenda has adjusted.
Okay, because the motion was by McGregor, but was there a second?
No, I just, I just moved to add that.
He was just adding it.
I just moved to add that rural water system vote to the agenda.
He suggested that.
So we're handling, handling that right now with this motion.
Okay.
As, as, motions for approval as corrected by Scott and Dan.
So Driscoll was the?
Moving to approve.
Was there a, was there a second to the motion?
Oh.
Seconded by Thomas. Discussion, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pull the same sign, motion carries. Item number four is approval of the minutes from August thirteenth meeting is the first one, then the next one will be on October eighth. This is the minutes for the, which are in the packet for the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Moved to approve.
Seconded by Dan and seconded by who?
Scott.
By Scott. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minute from the October eighth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Dan and is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. Seconded by me. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Item number six is conflict of interest disclosure.
I think just a minute.
Yep. Who's saying when we're ready?
The second motion was by Driscoll.
Seconded by me.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get back. So item number six is conflict of interest disclosure. Are there any items on today's agenda that any of the directors present would have a conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, the treasurer's report. Dan?
We have basically all our property tax levy payable in twenty twenty four. That interest number is underestimated because there's been interest accumulating that, I don't have the information on, but, so we're probably closer to twenty-four thousand on that. The grant amount is the money we've received from the federal government, which has all been spent. We always spend whatever we receive immediately, and then whatever part of the matching money that we set aside that has been spent, that, that's for the Pactola Deerfield Study. So the total revenue to date is three hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-four. We have forty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-four in our Black Hills Community Bank accounts. The, we have one CD with Raymond James, or no. The matching federal grant money, the, the total money we have for the, for the federal grant and the matching is eighty-two thousand two hundred forty, and that's for the Bureau of Rec contract. And the Raymond James CD is for a hundred thirty-eight thousand, and that comes due on the twelfth of March in nineteen, in twenty twenty-five. So the Raymond James CD accounts that have matured have gone into our savings account with Raymond James, so we have six hundred thirty-seven, six hundred fifty-two dollars there. So our total funds are nine hundred two thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars. Total expenditures to date are a hundred forty-seven, nine hundred forty-seven, and the water projects component of that is a hundred three thousand six hundred one dollars. So if there are no questions, I'll move on to? Sorry, my voice isn't doing too well today. Projects report. Those highlighted items in green there are the items that will come up later in the agenda. But the total amount of our obligated money fund, funding is six hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars. And if there are no questions?
Any questions for Dan and the treasurer's report? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Just one comment, just for clarification for folks that might be interested. We're, we're at four point four percent on a monthly basis right now on that savings account at Raymond James.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ron, is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Thomas. Do you want a second, Chair? Seconded by Thomas.
Yeah.
Discussion on the motion.
I'm not quick enough to take it off to you.
I got the phone right next to me here. Any discussion on the, the motion to approve the treasurer's report? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody aye?
Aye.
Okay. Pull the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dan. All right, that moves us to item number eight, approved payment of the dues to the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems. So now it's five hundred fifty dollars. Do you have anything to add, Ron?
No, just that we've been a longtime member, it shows on page seventeen of our packet since ninety-seven, since nineteen ninety-seven, so it's sort of a, a deal we've been involved with for a long time. The, the blurb at the very top shows you kind of what they do.
Is there a motion, motion to approve the five hundred fifty dollar payment?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ron, seconded by Thomas. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Item number nine is an item from the USGS Lycicle Survey of the ninety-five thousand hundred dollar grant request for the PFOS testing. And we asked representatives here from the USGS that are going to provide that for information only presentation. So Galen, are you the person?
That's me.
Please reiterate yourself, please, for the record.
Sure, Dan. Hello, everyone, I'm Galen Hogestra, head jobs for the USGS here in Attle City. Also got Jamie Howder and Dave Bender from our office here as well have helped work on this proposal idea for, for everybody here today, so. I'm, I can go over kind of a quick overview of what's in there or why we're doing, why we brought this forward to the board here today, then open for some questions, discussion. I think as you mentioned, the, we're just going to do an informational kind of session here, then handle it officially in, starting in January with kind of some?
I did meet with, with these USGS staff members before this proposal was put together, and so I got quite a bit of information there.
Yep.
But at our executive board meeting, we decided since we're going to have four new board members coming on after the first year of the meeting, and Cheryl's going to be gone, so we, and, and this kind of amount, this over twenty-five thousand dollars requires two votes.
Yep.
So that's the reason that we, we decided to use full information purposes here today, so.
Sure. So I guess I'll just give a few comments about what, what the purpose is here and, and open up for questions afterwards. So the part of this is PFOS monitoring the Black Hills, so PFOS is, for those that might not be familiar, perin polyfluoral alkal substances, it's a, I'm going to call it, it's really a new water quality issue that's going to impact every public and private water system, really in, in the, in the nation. So what's new about it is, you know, we've been aware of this for several years, decades now, but starting in this most recent April, April twenty twenty-four, US EPA established the legally enforceable drinking water standard for PFOS. So that's kind of where, where we're across over the line from sort of research topic to now it's a legally enforceable topic that everybody has to be aware of and, and get some information on. So really what this means, or thought with this sampling effort is that most of the current PFOS water quality information is from treated distribution points. So you have a, a community water system that supplies water to, you know, some residents in the housing development, or a city, or, or a large pipeline that distributes water. You're sampling the treated water as it goes out to the customers. But currently, there isn't really any statewide efforts to gain an understanding of the source waters. So for example, the state's DNR program, they do not sample for PFOS as part of their water quality monitoring network, so we just don't have any sort of consistent information about is there PFOS in the streams of the state? Is there PFOS in groundwater that might not be currently tapped for a, a water supply? And that's really the, the data gap that we're looking at right now. So we've talked with DNR, there's, you know, kind of some ideas of, of adding that eventually, but it's just not there yet. So I think what we're trying to do here is build that data set and figure out what are the PFOS concentrations in the streams, or basically the source waters of the Black Hills region. And it's really important to sample at the areas in upper, I guess I call them upper Black Hills, or the areas above the limestone loch zone, because those streams feed into the aquifers that City Rapid City uses, a lot of other big water suppliers use. So that's kind of the, the, the purpose here, and, you know, I'll, I'll kind of mention we've discussed this with, about everybody that we could think of that would have an interest in this, and I'm happy to see a, a few of them are here today to kind of talk about, so I'll just list off. You know, we've worked with Ellsworth Air Force Base and AFKEC, the Air Force Civil Engineer Center, for a couple of years, you know, associated with their known contamination PFOS issue around, around the Air Force Base, and that's sort of been what everybody associates PFOS with, is oh, it's only found in the Air Force Base, as well we're starting to see that it's showing up in place, so we wouldn't necessarily expect it to be showing, showing up either. You know, a, a common thing we hear from the, the Ellsworth crew in AFKEC is, we want to know what's the natural background levels of, of PFOS in, in, in the region that might kind of help provide some information for, for their purposes. Thanks to Jen for showing up here to, if you wanted to add anything else about what your, your angle might be, I guess feel free to jump in too.
Yeah, well, I guess we're in a different watershed to the north of here with Box Elder Creek, but we've been working with USGS for the last several years, they've done a lot of good work for us. We are looking to do our own background study eventually in the next year or two. It's an Air Force-like project, so I don't have specifics on it, but that'll be mostly focused on the Box Elder, Box Elder Creek area.
Yeah, and a big part of our sampling plan would be Box Elder Creek above, you know, by Nemo area, above the loch zones, and then also have another one above, above the base there as well. So, you know, I guess I kind of skipped over the, the gist of this, is about a dozen sampling sites in the Black Hills, so focusing on Pennington County, so we're trying to stay within the, the West Dakota borders there. So we got Box Elder Creek, two sites, Rapid Creek about three or four sites, we can kind of move some of those around, Spring Creek, two sites, and actually three sites, Spring Creek, and two sites on Battle Creek through Keystone there. About probably four sampling runs, dozen sites, collected over about eight month period of, of data collection there, so just a way to capture some of the variability, both, you know, up and down the streams and also throughout the seasons. But again, just maybe we'll go rapid fire through some of the other people we've talked to that have, have an interest in this. Mount Rushmore National Memorial, National Park Services, most or many of you are, are aware of, they are part of this unregulated contaminant monitoring regulation, the, the UCMR five program as they call it, that sampled for PFOS last year. They had a detection of PFOS in their drinking water supply that was above the proposed standard, so they're going through a, a bit of a painful system to try to figure out how to treat it or, or how to address that issue.
Where is their source?
So their source is in a shallow, isolated groundwater system. And, but it's spring-fed, very, very vulnerable to, you know, surface water recharge and that sort of thing, so. They're, they're kind of what I call is an example of a system that was surprised by it. There's not an obvious source, you know, again, today you think of PFOS as industrial sources, Teflon coatings, foams, you just don't think of that as any of that stuff happening around Rushmore, we're trying to figure out why. So they, they've got a big interest in figuring out is it a wider problem than just in their park? Is it present in Battle Creek? Is it present in Spring Creek? So there's not Rushmore, there's, City Rapid City is another potential partner in this, so City Rapid City's a little bigger scale for their water system, they've got a better treatment plant, better staff, so they're, they're probably more capable to, and they are doing their own monitoring work for PFOS within their system, but what we would be assisting with for Rapid City is, you know, going up and higher. So above Pactola, are we seeing anything? Are there any concerns above the loch zones? So they're going to be a, a player in this as well. Rapid Valley Sand Creek District, right where we're sitting here, the, they pull from water connected to Rapid Creek. They talked to Rapid City through a message, they had done some sampling for PFOS about two years ago and had one detection that was below the standard at the time, haven't really done much since, so it's on the radar, it'll, it'll be part of their program, moving forward to. And then finally mentioned, South Dakota DNR, had some conversations with them about where, where, where would they be going for a monitoring program? Got on the same page, so we know kind of the same, we'll use the same methods if and when they get their program implemented. It's, really right now, they don't have, they, they've got some ideas of how they're going to start to roll out more of this PFOS monitoring, but they just don't have the capabilities at the moment to?
Do they have a timeframe that they're, that they're looking at?
They're probably thinking within the next year or so, but, I mean, they're still trying to identify labs, that's another big problem with this PFOS situation, is there's not a lab in South Dakota that can do this, it's, you have to have a, somebody contracted outside that, that can do this, and it has the certifications for, for PFOS, that sort of thing. So it's, again, it's a new and pretty complicated water quality issue for, that everybody's going to have to address here, so. I guess I'll kind of pause there and be able to just kind of summarize that, you know, we're, we can adjust a few details on the proposal as presented, so especially things like sampling sites, it's always a question about cautioning other partners involved. I men, I mentioned a few partners that may be involved. Rapid City's probably the, the, the most likely of somebody else that might contribute here, but before the next meeting, we can, if there's a cost, sure that they're written to the table, we'll, we'll mention that. But that's kind of the, where we're at, so. Again, the rest was ninety-five K from the board, and USGS provides some matching funds for a project toll, I think about one thirty-five.
Yeah, at our executive committee meeting for putting this agenda together, I mean, that was probably the big idea was, why are, why are we funding that much time? We got water users that probably have, we're, we're not a water user, you know? And if somebody else can help fund it, our portion of it, you know? That was, that was awesome.
And I, and I guess the kind of thought or response to that is, you know, you look at what's the mission of the West Dakota Water Development District, and that's why we drew the boundaries of, of Pennington County is, you're, you know, part of your, your opportunity to help here is help those smaller systems, you know, be aware of what's going on, so they're not surprised when they get forced to monitor a year or two down the road, and they say, oh crap, I got PFOS, I got to put in a reverse osmosis water treatment system. So if we can help provide some information in advance before it's too late, I think that would benefit, you know, all the taxpayers in, in the county.
Any questions for Galen?
Yep. What do you, what do you have to say about the ongoing things in the Big Sioux drainage, you know, in terms of PFOS monitoring?
Right.
Being sponsored or done by, by the East Dakota in combination with School of Mines?
Yep.
How does that relate to what's going on here and the interactions with the DNR and all that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great, great point, and that's another, and see, I failed to mention, so for those unfamiliar, the East Dakota Water Development District sponsored a kind of a similar recon effort just on the Big Sioux River in eastern South Dakota, look for PFOS for the same reasons we're talking about here, just to, you know, get some data available now, so, so we're not surprised. Yeah, I did touch base with Jay Gilbertson from, from East Dakota, mainly to confirm, okay, are we going to use the same methods? We're going to have roughly the same kind of timeframe of the sampling, so we're, we're trying to almost have a analogous sort of study on both sides of the state here between those two. So I think that's, it, it makes sense to have, you know, a consistent effort as much as we can until the state kind of gets their plan together, and eventually, you know, this isn't going to be a long-term plan, this is just going to be a one-year thing, same as eastern side. Hopefully, a year from now, DNR takes over this kind of effort.
And you hear a conversation with DNR staff after resampling sites, is that something that they would be continuing?
Right.
That sampling at those sites as, as a program?
It would be, there'd be potentially one or two overlapping sites, so I guess I don't, I didn't put a picture of the WQM, the, the state's WQM network, but that's where the, their sampling would be is eventually incorporated their WQM network, so there's, again, there, there's not a lot of WQM sites that would overlap with what we have proposed, especially above that, that limestone area. So that, that would be unique regardless of, of if they start to implement this. But yeah, that's where their sites would be.
You see, this, when this proposal's completed, would you, would your organization still continue to have, have them, and work with whoever, continue it, or would somebody take it over?
We would certainly welcome that to, you know, continue, you know, the thing that I always try to preach is consistency in length of data, so we got to have long-term consistent data sets are better than these, you know, if you just collect data for one or two years, and then you have somebody else definitely come in and do something a little bit different, it's, it's hard to tie those things together, so. We're hoping that by at least using the consistent methods, consistent sites that DNR and others might use, then, you know, if it's us to continue, great, if not, at least we got it started, so we can get it going for the next person.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but just to reinforce what Chairman Bjorki says is, we'd sure like to see some, at least the bigger players come in as, you know, cost share partners on this deal. They've got quite a bunch of skin in the game.
Sure.
What would be the downside in waiting a year until some of those other partners are potentially involved in a more comprehensive plan?
I guess the, the downside, I always use Mount Rushmore as the unfortunate example of catches somebody off guard, and if you can understand what the background conditions are, what the, what the sources might be a year from now, then, you know, there's going to be cost savings in getting that, getting those mitigation plans, whether it's a reverse osmosis treatment system put in this year versus next year, it would, it would benefit anybody who would have an issue.
Why would there be cost savings in a year?
Just the cost of?
Of inflation.
Infrastructure, yep, yep, just, just that kind of stuff.
Hasn't anybody done any of this work on White Wood Creek?
No, I don't believe there's anything on?
Wouldn't that be a fairly serious water?
Yeah.
To do this on?
That would be another possibility, and again, it's just, it was outside of Pennington County, so I guess we didn't put a star on the map for White Wood.
You know, I was talking about, and I said, we, you know, our money needs to be spent in our?
Yeah, I know, but that goes to my point of doing this in a more comprehensive fashion and involving more of the interested actors or impacted actors.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, it's just?
I'm not adverse to, you know, spending some money. I'm not adverse to, you know, spending some money on this, but seems a little premature, a little costly to us to me right now. What's your, when when this stuff is found, what's the treatment process?
So if we're treating it, it's basically reverse osmosis, which is most often you think of, you know, ROs can be on a point of use on like a kitchen sink or something like that, or bowel bowel filling station if it's uh if that's all it is. For a large municipal supplier like, you know, our city of Rapid City, there are industrial-sized uh RO units that that would be employed. So that's that's kind of what I mentioned. If it's an issue for something the scale of Rapid City, they'd probably have the means to address it. If it's something on the scale of the, you know, Colonial Pine Hills or a smaller uh water supplier, it'd be more of a more of an issue.
And where are your samples analyzed?
So our samples are through, they're called SGS laboratories. Uh they're uh uh many locations across US are uh basically a subcontract of our USGS Labs. Uh they've got the off, the lab we probably send it to is in New Jersey, they've got offices in Orlando and another one in Canada that we've used before too. So SGS Labs.
So New Jersey by Groans?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Hey, I have a question.
Who who's got a question? Go ahead.
So um I, this is just a general question, um does reversal osmosis use like twice the amount of water?
I think that's a fair assumption that.
It's like above and beyond.
Yeah.
You use what goes in, you still gotta have a rinse water.
Requires a lot of makeup water to go through the process, so yeah, it's.
Okay, that that would kind of standing off, so I just wanted to clarify that. And that's something that, you know, if there is the PFAS um high levels that they find for, let's say, Rapid City, I mean, you know, just with the lack of water in the future, possibility that that's something that's really gonna have to be considered. True?
Yeah, it could lead to a greater water consumption and and dealing with the waste product is another.
I think I was gonna mention that, what do you what do you do with the waste?
Waste, the waste product is is a difficult thing that I think EPA is still wrestling with, because the only solution now is throw it in landfills and then you're not really you're still you're still introducing that to the environment.
Yeah, not a good idea.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that same question. This is a good idea. Yeah?
So how long has the new EPA requirement regulation been in effect?
So April twenty twenty-four, so just a couple of months ago, they established it or published it. There is a an implementation timeline, so it's not like a immediate um um compliance, so. Uh I've got my notes here, because this stuff, so so within three years, so between now and twenty twenty-seven, there's, you know, what they call the initial monitoring phase, so that's this UCMR, the Unregulated Candid Monitoring Program. And then so starting in twenty twenty-seven, they're saying that that's when the water suppliers need to do their regulatory mon- their their regulatory monitoring for compliance. So we've got essentially between now and twenty twenty-seven to figure out if there is an issue, you know, through this, through the pre- the the pre um, you know, the basis, the period, the period is now between, now in twenty twenty-seven is when, uh if you have detection of PFAS in your source water, you're not gonna get penalized for it. Twenty twenty-seven, it starts that uh sort of the penalty phase where there's more requirements for uh if you have hits of it.
So in essence, we're at the very front end of when there would be required testing for for community water suppliers?
Right, yeah, they they wouldn't have to be required, as I understand it, for another two years, let's say. So that's kind of why I say it's filling in data gaps, so it's helping with uh these voluntary monitoring efforts that not all the um, you know, not all entities are are able to take on by themselves.
But would would it be accurate that over the course of the next several years, all suppliers um fifteen service connections or whatever the threshold is enough, will be required to begin some amount of testing for PFAS?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So at this point in time, we really don't know, we don't have any sort of a feel for what sort of problems might be out there in the water supplies.
Right.
But we we will, we will be seeing that soon, so at this point in time, you know, one question could be, well, to what extent do we need to be testing these waters until we know what have we got in our drinking water supplies?
Yeah, you could look at it either way, um I would kind of look at it from you start at the treated water supply, the distribution that work your way upstream, or you start with a source and use that to ward off or provide warnings for anybody that might be using that source.
How is your thirty seventy cost split determined?
Oh, the the cost share, yeah, so USGS provides matching funds here. Uh seventy thirty is just sort of our, I think I've talked about this in in the past, but just basically, USGS is given a set amount of um matching funds to work with other local, non-federal entities and uh it's just a consistent ratio that we've determined works for the size of our program. If we have thirty percent cost share, it spreads it around, so everybody kind of gets a piece of it. So it's it's not, it's not, doesn't vary between you and uh, you know, some other uh, you know, like East Dakota would be similar and state would be similar, so.
It's simply a policy position of USGS then.
Right.
Nothing is law or rule that requires a limited thirty percent.
No, it's just based on how much our allocation was for our center and how much we have available.
Basically not use all your available matching funds on any one.
Exactly.
Or overuse funds on any one project.
Yeah.
Any more questions here? Is any grave, so you do?
The next one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Haley. Dan, my lead. Do you have a feel for how much of the contamination comes from the source versus something in the water treatment plants themselves?
That's been.
And is this look, trying to find that out?
I thi- I think you're you're kind of referring to uh PFAS and minorized through like plumbing fittings and through like a treatment process, yeah. That's been possible too for for sources, and that's maybe a kind of another reason to think about it from what's in the source water versus what's coming out of the distribution lines, it's there's, it's very possible that you have uh PFAS coming through. Teflon fittings are are probably the most uh obvious case there. But yeah, it's, it it it's possible, those things happen in sources.
You there, Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I was deep in, we were wondering if somebody else.
You're getting, you're getting another call.
No, I I was I was starting to wonder, maybe instead of doing water tests, they should do blood tests, because they can do blood tests on people and find PFAS, correct?
I don't think the government wants to get involved with blood testing of their citizens, at least at least my government agency is not going to get involved with that. Appreciate the idea.
Speaking of that, do you have any indications of what's gonna happen with Interior and its agencies under the new administration?
Uh it's, I I really can't say what's gonna happen, there's, there's always changes with every change of administration, but we've had no indication that there's gonna be.
Seems to me kind of regulatory involvement that they might be opposed to.
Yeah.
Another reason we're waiting for a year. See how it settles down.
That's something we might have to decide in our next meeting, when we go forward with this project or not, so. Um is there anybody in the audience that has any comments, any various uh information that's provided here today?
About PFAS concerning with fish?
About the week talk.
Okay.
Yes.
Are isn't the plant out uh south of here being pre-done or upgraded?
They're adding additional capacity, yes.
Is that capacity able to, going to be able to withstand or take care of the sampling or upgrading through that source?
That's a good question, um you know, basically what they're doing, you know, that plant was built back, it was fifty years, sixty years ago, or whatever it was, sixty years ago. The, you know, it was just a secondary treatment treatment plant, so they're taking, they're getting rid of that and building, adding additional up-to-date uh treatment processes to treat the wastewater, but it's not and they're not dealing with PFAS out there at all. I mean, it's it's basically biological treatment in order to get it to a level they can discharge the waste back to Rapid Creek. So that's what they're designing that for.
So eventually, but after we updated again.
Well, city's growing and it's served its purpose, they own the original plant, that's for sure. Any more questions? If not, I appreciate you coming here and see what happens in our next meeting.
We'll check back in January.
Okay, thank you for coming. Merry Christmas. Lab number ten, Game Fish and Parks Aquatic Invasive Species Program, so the results. Ryan, you want to give us a guess?
Yeah, we've got uh Jake Davis here from Game of Fish, and on page twenty-four, twenty-six, there's a summary table that he may be talking about, and he may be telling us a few more things, so take it away.
All right, thank you very much, good afternoon, absolutely. My name's Jake Davis, I'm a program administrator with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks. Uh this afternoon, I just have a quick update on the department's aquatic invasive species program that just wrapped up operations for twenty twenty-four. Our aquatic invasive species program is a statewide program, has a multiple, few different approaches. We have outreach and education as our primary source, our primary tool on our toolbox, trying to reach every surface water in South Dakota, provide them the the information they need to use best management practices every time they use a water of the state. Uh we also have a watercraft inspection and decontamination program. That's where we go out and actually interact with users at water bodies or roadside locations. Essentially, we stop and talk to users at boat ramps or at roadside inspection locations. Uh we check for compliance with current administrative rule regarding aquatic invasive species such as boat plugs. Additionally, we exchange information, uh provide them with uh handouts, sponges, all kinds of different things, just basically trying to spread the word of clean, drain, dry. This is a partnership Game Fish and Parks has had with West Dakota for several years now, we really appreciate that partnership here in western South Dakota. Our program in western South Dakota is a fairly robust one, we have our six large reservoirs here in western South Dakota that we use access-based watercraft inspection, so basically what that means is that boat ramps, we set up staff ten hours a day, seven days a week during the primary boating season, which is May through October, and uh we interact with users. So this year, again, West Dakota decided to help partner with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks within Pennington County, so that would be Pactola and Sheridan Reservoirs. We did not set up inspection stations at Deerfield this year. Primary reason is it gets quite a bit less use than our other water bodies, and those are very expensive inspections when you look at overall numbers. Uh last year, for example, we had staff up there basically ten hours a day, seven days a week for a hundred and twenty-six inspections. So again, that gets quite pricey, so um the most bang for our buck was to just use uh inspection stations staffing at Pactola and Sheridan. So those locations are at the north and south boat ramps at each of those water bodies. Uh the staffing occurs with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks interns, full-time staff. Law enforcement officers are there from time to time, and then additionally, we have a partnership with local county conservation districts, Pennington County being the one that helps staff at Pactola and Sheridan. Um they're able to do some additional hiring that really helps us for the program, because our internship program is great. However, it has some sideboards that doesn't allow us to open up to a larger pool of applicants. By using the county conservation districts, they can offer a higher pay rate additionally. They can offer employment to individuals outside of what our internship program can. So again, this year, we started in May, wrapped up in October. Pactola was our longest-running inspection location in the state. Uh where we wind wound up at the state was we had over twenty-one thousand inspections, so it was our highest number to date. Those are all unique inspections. Uh within Pennington County, we had forty-eight hundred. So the way that that broke down was we had just over three thousand at Pactola and just over seventeen hundred at Sheridan Reservoir. Sheridan Reservoir was up in inspections compared to last year, Pactola was down a couple hundred. We are thinking that the construction on three eighty-five impacted that just because access was limited during times of the summer. Um and then Pa- or Sheridan was likely up at times because while it was still limited, it wasn't to the extent that Pactola was. But uh numbers, again, very similar to where they were last year. As far as some of the big um impacts and new zebra mussel infestations across the state, we had three. They were all east river, there are no new detections in western South Dakota, so Pactola continues to be the only water body in this in western South Dakota with an established population of zebra mussels. Um now, we certainly look for other aquatic invasive species, there are inspections, but we do focus a lot on zebra mussels, and one of the primary reasons is uh the majority of our funding for the western program comes from the US Fish and Wildlife Service, and that funding mechanism is called the Quaga Zebra Mussel Action Plan. So we always report zebra mussel infestations, just because in western South Dakota, that's the primary funding source that comes from US Fish and Wildlife. Uh some of the other funding for the program, in addition to West Dakota funding, comes from Game Fish and Parks license dollars. Um additionally, we have some grant funds from the Forest Service as well for the Black Hills National Forest. So that's where our program is at this year. Um the big uh time of the year, I would say, when we run into mussel-follow boats on Pactola, just from an information side of things, is when the slipholders at the north and south arena remove their watercraft in September. Uh majority of watercraft that are now stored on Pactola for the duration of the summer are mussel-followed when they leave, they are fairly heavily encrusted with zebra mussels. So we make sure that we have extra staff onboard, we work with the slipholders to know when those watercraft are leaving, so that we have staff there. Um additionally, we get assistance from the state of Montana, we've had assistance from the state of Colorado, some of our western partners, to get additional staff for those those two weeks when those slipholders are coming out of that water body. So with that, again, this is just simply a quick update on how operations went, appreciate the partnership again for twenty twenty-four. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that anybody may have on operations in western South Dakota, statewide, um any of that, so.
Do you have any idea why you haven't seen a migration to Sheridan?
So what we would like to think is, and this happens in in eastern South Dakota too, we have adjacent water bodies that one may be positive for mussels, the other are not. Um the hope is that, we've been doing this since twenty eighteen as far as inspections, uh since we've had the the authority to actually stop watercraft and do inspections, but also our outreach and education, the hope is that we are reaching enough users that we're changing user behavior, that's what we're looking at doing. Um on a statewide level, our plug compliance is one of our success metrics that we look at, how many users are actually following administrative rule that would help with uh reducing the transport of of AIS. We're at ninety-eight percent statewide, and in some locations, we've seen up to a hundred percent. This number has gone up over the last couple of years, so we do feel like we're getting better user compliance. Now, we also would say that it only takes once for an introduction to happen, so there's always that chance. However, um we would say that we are slowing the spread just by seeing that user compliance, and um every year is a little different, however, this year, we only had three water bodies in the state, so we haven't seen any kind of exponential increase in new infestations. At times, we see a few more, sometimes less, so. As far as specific to Sheridan, I couldn't tell you anything specific, other than we hope we're changing user behavior there. And again, that the same can be said for water bodies in the eastern side, where you have some that are adjacent that may not have mussels to our knowledge and others that do.
Have you been able to successfully eradicate mussels anywhere?
We have not, and really, nobody else has, so there's a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, there's a couple options that have been tried. Um in some cases, it's it's really not a viable option, once they're in there, just the size of a water body, so there are some chemical treatments. Um Zequinox is one that's been used several times in Minnesota, it's primarily more for a spot treatment. We ran some numbers on what it would take uh to do a water body the size of a Waki, and the numbers are in the billions as far as the cost. Um it has been used in Colorado as well. Um and those treatments, depending on which one you look at, uh they generally have been unsuccessful. Also, there's nothing that would say it's preventative, it's it's one and done, always has the possibility of a new infestation. Some of the things that have been done, say in Nebraska, there was a small water body drained, it was, it sat over winter. drained, it sat over winter then, so the idea that those mussels were high and dry and then froze during the winter. Excuse me. However, they were found still. It had mussels a year or two later, so a short-term fix. So really, right now, there is no viable option to eradicate mussels once they become established.
I see, Ryan.
I guess I got two questions. One, is there any, is there a similar plan proposed, you know, for monitoring next year in 2025? And are we going to be likely asked for some funding assistance in 2025?
Sure. So start with first question, as far as what our plan would be for a watercraft inspection program, the answer would be yes. We have a few things that are still a little unknown. One of our partnerships with the conservation districts, the manager of the Pennington County Conservation District is stepping down. With that, they will be hiring a new manager. Now, it is unknown if that individual is willing to take on the administrative duties that Pennington County had performed before. If that doesn't happen, that will change what our partnership looks like, but until we know what that change in personnel looks like, we don't know, you know, again, what that partnership may or may not look like here this winter and spring. If we're not able to partner with the county conservation districts, that would certainly change our program just because they hire several dozen employees for us that we really would not be able to staff on our own. Now, as far as a funding request from this board in the spring, again, we don't quite know. What I will say, though, is that we use the funds in previous years to help cover the match that was required with these federal grants along with GFP license dollars. The new grants we have from U.S. Fish and Wildlife do not have a match requirement, so we may not need to request any funds. Now, the Forest Service grant that we have, that cost-share agreement does have, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five. But currently, we're looking at covering that cost with GFP law enforcement staff time. So again, I can't say that we'd be requesting funds next year or not. Right now, I would say probably not.
So you, with these water bodies, do you test outside of doing the drain, the boat inspections? Do you have any spots in the, where you drop in to see if mussels are there from outside of the period that you're covering?
Sure. So our federal partners will do some of what we call the veliger sampling, so that's the juvenile free-floating form of a zebra mussel. They're microscopic. Basically, they go and take water samples during mid to late summer when, if there's veligers present, they're just floating in the water column. So they'll take water samples, send them off, and look for, that's an early detection measure there. We don't perform any as far as game fishing parks, and the primary reason is that it hasn't shown, in our opinion, to be that much of an early detection. There's been a number of water bodies in the state where veliger sampling was occurring, all those were negative, and then we found adults. So the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation does perform veliger sampling on Pactola, excuse me, not Pactola, since it's already positive, Deerfield, Sheridan, Belfoo, Shade Hill, and Angostura. They share that information with us, the sampling they did this summer was negative. So there is that other sampling that's occurring, but as far as game fishing parks, we don't simply because at times it hasn't shown to be that effective in our mind.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jake? If not, thanks, appreciate you coming.
No, thank you.
You might be interested in item number twelve on our three nineteen application, which we're going to be bringing up here.
I'll stick around.
You ever thought of having a recipe competition for zebra mussels?
There are a few organisms that eat them, the thing is, it's just not at a level of impact. Point seven hundred thousand in a square yard.
Is that for the next item?
Great.
Did I just download it? Are you ready for item number eleven?
He has a PowerPoint in there.
Okay. Well, I'll just introduce.
This is a, it's not.
The one that's in four West Dakota meeting, the folder four there, that's it. So I was going to give a quick.
Let me introduce this one then, if you're ready. So we're going to move to item number eleven, request authorization for hundred-dollar gift certificates for four erosion control volunteers, and Dan is also going to give us here the update on the erosion control projects that are participating, and so you have the floor.
Sure, so here in early November, started a bit of a push to spread leaves on basically our two projects at La Croix Links and Star Village. We've been spreading various yard waste, initially some grass clippings, then fall of the year, leaves at Star Village for a number of years. It's proven to be very effective in basically holding the sediments in places in the limited number of areas that we do it. And so this year, we expanded to La Croix also. So we ended up with our volunteers spreading about a total of fifteen hundred lawn waste bags, I'd estimate, just based on how many bags to a load and how many loads went in. So about half of those went in at La Croix Links, so what you've got there is a before and after picture, and the one in the background, truck and a trailer, and there's basically three loads of bags stockpiled there, and that's on the east side of it. And it's about, oh, two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet across from east to west, or from left to right, if you're looking at it from Minnesota. It's quite a ways into the middle, so we ended up bringing in bags to the other side as well. You can see that we've got the slope peppered with wattles, the erosion control socks. Most of that got done last year, another volunteer project, and it was pretty effective at holding the sediment in place, and there's a fair amount of broken vegetation in there. Things kind of try to grow on their own, so the hope is that with a little bit of future maintenance, you know, we may be able to cure the majority of this problem area without any mechanical activity. We're going to need to do a little bit of topsoil in several areas that are pretty much bare shale, but time will tell, but it's a very cost-effective mechanism. So anyhow, the slide in the lower right, it took three different days, usually something on the order of two hours and a little bit more, maybe, to be all we could do in one day. Pretty rigorous activity for most of the people, ages of our volunteers, and that was about our limit. So anyhow, the next slide then just shows our volunteer group over on the left side, more the westerly side, looking at it from Minnesota, and basically, I'd bought a bunch of these big white demolition bags, and we'll fill those with, oh, up to about three of the lawn waste bags, then you can drag them in sideways, and so that's how the process went. The next slide then is Star Village, and that's before we started anything in 2021, so there's basically no mitigation in place there whatsoever, and, you know, everything's pretty much just the bare shale. And then the next slide, pretty hard to see from this distance. You know, we've basically been holding the edges in place, and then there's a number of locations where we've got kind of like La Croix partial vegetation, where the lawn waste is really effective at holding things in place. The big bare shale areas, we're just going to have to wait for the dump trucks and dozers and topsoil it. But basically, the kind of the longer ovals along the upper edge would be, you know, we're facing south on that picture, so that's along all the headcuts where we've treated them with a couple rows of wattles and then been applying the yard waste. It's just, to me, really amazing how well it stabilizes things, and then there's a few of the other areas where we've got the broken vegetation. So ended up with another round number, seven or eight hundred bags in this area. So then the next slide, I don't know if that's going to, it's kind of hard to get PowerPoint and Excel to mesh together on this, but a simple little table, that's part of it, necessarily adept enough. I thought it might be useful to start tracking volunteer hours on some of these things because we'll be doing some of that as we move into the three nineteen program, and, you know, basically, volunteer activities can be used as an in-kind contribution. So some total, the volunteer activities ended up somewhere around two hundred and thirty-eight hours. Hundred and fourteen of that was my time. There were four of the workers who were, I guess I called them my mainstays, contributed ninety-two hours between them, and then, you know, a smattering of others, thirty-two hours. So I guess that's my last slide, and before we move on to the item for gift certificates, I'll just pause there and see if there's any questions on what we've done.
Any people to those volunteer hours?
Well, if my four mainstays and myself, that's five, and then the other thirty-two hours involved at least three other people. I don't know if they're any beyond three. Usually, Dan Mirkey's able to help a lot this year, he had a lot of circumstances. Craig Care helped for a day, actually, my wife, there's a fourth one, and Linda Harris, former director. So I know there are at least four others out there, and that's about the size of it.
Any questions for Dan on this, on the volunteers? If not, we're ready to move to the other one.
So as far as the gift certificate, you know, basically, of these four workers that they called the mainstays, they had all contributed at least twenty hours each on this, and typically, we try to do a worker appreciation party one night, but, you know, these people really had to step up, I guess, lack of other help, and I thought it would be nice to give them something to cover dinner and a drink at a decent place to eat, something like the Longhorn Steakhouse. So I'm going to make a motion that these four volunteers would be eligible for each a one hundred dollar gift certificate.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, the second to provide a hundred dollar gift certificate for those four volunteers that Dan just mentioned. Discussion on the motion.
The only thing I'd add is that the executive committee meeting we had, we weren't really so sure that we were excited about getting into paying people who were actually classified as volunteers. That could create some confusion, and as well, set an interesting precedent for volunteers and expectations going forward. So it was the executive's committee's consensus, then it was kind of dicey.
I would like to propose a substitute motion for a certificate of appreciation for the four volunteers with a blurb in the packet and a formal recognition of their service at a meeting.
Okay, is there a motion? Wait, do we have a, do we need a second for that, Dan, or not?
No.
It's a substitute motion.
Yes, is there a second to the substitute motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ron. Discussion on the substitute motion.
I get wary about financial purchases, especially around over a hundred dollars. I know many organizations, corporate and whatnot, usually the limit is twenty-five, and so throwing a hundred dollars, they probably deserve it. So I'm not arguing the merit of the proposal, but with precedent, I am more or less concerned about it since it was a volunteer activity, that it should be for volunteering, and I think a certificate, formal recognition, even though it might not cover what would the amount of effort, but it is probably within guidelines that we would not run into being foul with use of public money, would be my, is why I am proposing the substitute motion.
Any more discussion on the substitute motion?
I would like also to, like also to see placed on the website, the appreciation. It'd be placed on the website.
Oh, okay. Dan, did you have a comment?
Well, yes, my comment would be that in our three nineteen program, I think the rate for volunteer hours is something thirty-three dollars and change per hour, so, you know, the three hundred and some hours, you know, seven, eight thousand dollars worth of effort, it's obviously just a token if there is a gift certificate. That's my only comment.
I guess Mike, you know, I was at the executive committee, I kind of agree with what these two have said about that. We, you know, we've had, there's been hundreds of volunteer hours put into this program since we started, for this erosion control project over the last three, four years. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to start paying volunteers, I do have an issue with that personally, so I would be voting in favor of the substitute motion. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of the substitute?
Uh, go ahead. Make sure I have it right.
Okay.
Substitute motion by Max, seconded by Coth, to provide recognition and a certificate of appreciation to the four workers. I'm not sure if you wanted the website thing in there.
Yes.
We can do that regardless, but.
But that was the intention that it would be known.
Okay, any secondary to vote on, all in favor of the, oh, okay.
As far as website recognition, I would suggest against that. I don't think we want to be listing names of people who are being recognized. These people just happen to put in twenty hours instead of some people less than twenty hours. Whatever the website might do, I would be reluctant to list any names there.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what he's saying, because there's a lot of volunteers, different people over the last, over our time period, that have put time and energy into these projects that we did as a volunteer group, so.
I'm okay with the removal.
Okay. Who is the second? Are you okay with that? Okay. So we'll leave that out of the motion then.
So I have substitute motion by Max, seconded by Coth, to provide certificates of appreciation to the four workers. Is that right?
Yep. All right, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Nate. Pull the same side?
Nate.
Two nays.
So it's four, four and two against.
So that's a majority.
Yeah. Motion carries. All right, that was number eleven. Moving on to number twelve, update on the December twelfth non-point source task force meeting here, and on EPA section three nineteen application for the Rapid Peak watershed project. Before I turn that over, I just personally want to recognize Director Coth and Director Disco for working a lot of hours and putting this thing together that has some field trips and so forth, and I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts to put this application together for this money. So with that, Dan, do you want to take it from there?
Sure, so there's a handout that's basically the budget table for what was our final submittal, which resembles a budget table that we looked at in October when we gave an update, but the bottom line changed a little bit to where our three nineteen. nineteen request from EPA was a total of two hundred thousand, which was uh, down from, I think it'd been, well, I forget what it was in October, but basically we eliminated what had been a certain amount of erosion control implementation work. So uh, the, the sum total of the, of the required non-federal match would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. The, the only implementation that would take place would be a certain amount of soil health and riparian health best management practices that, that uh, would be implemented in basically the, the lower part of most downstream parts of the reaches that, that we're looking at. So the, the mainstay of the planned program would be basically two things, uh, well, four things. Um, there would be watershed protection plans, uh, developed for two reaches of Rapid Creek or segments, segment two and segment three. Segment two being from Pactola Dam to Canyon Lake and then segment three from Canyon Lake to uh, a ways downstream from the city limits, partway out into the, the valley. So basically, um, the reason for these is that, you know, these reaches have no impairment and basically EPA had issued an opinion that really be best because there's no impairment to, to first put in place the, the protection plans. Uh, then the other two items would be engineered site plans for uh, two locations with future planned activities. One would be the, the Star Village Erosion Control Project and then uh, the other would be stream restoration project below Pactola Dam. So that's what the, the project now looks like. Um, we were approved at the non-point source task force meeting for our, our full request. We're the only ones that were approved for our full requests, but uh, they ended up with quite a few more, with more funding requested than they had originally anticipated. They have a sum total of just over two million dollars to, to dole out and they had requests, uh, just a little north of four million dollars. So um, basically that's part of why I think when we were putting this all together with DNR that they'd suggested that, that we would scale it back a little bit. So uh, at, at any rate, um, the next step in the process is that uh, this has to receive final approval from South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources, which would take place on January sixth in Pier. And then it is of course contingent on having the funds available, which uh, you know, there's no guarantees with the changes in administration and the like. But uh, you know, I guess at this point in time, I'll remain pretty optimistic that um, things are likely to move, move forward. The, the timeframe for, for things happening, it, some amount of it'll depend on when budgets get approved, but uh, beyond that, there's a fair amount of wheels that have to turn in the background. And we're told that the, the likelihood is that typically it's at least July or August and it could be later before the, the cash flow would, would actually occur. Uh, once that would happen, we would essentially begin the, what is primarily the planning processes, the watershed protection plans and development of the, the site plans for the two sites where we would begin working. Um, the, the implementation on soil health and riparian health, we'd really be looking at a con- combination of, you know, DNR, Nathan Anderson's not here today, but uh, he's a coordinator for the, for DNR on the Riparian Buffer Initiative and then the Conservation District, uh, and NRCS. You know, I think we'd be looking, you know, to partner with them on, you know, finding candidates to, to work in. So you know, I guess the bottom line is that, you know, as far as doing implementation on, on these uh, erosion control and stream restoration projects that we've looked at, you know, our next opportunity will really be, you know, a year from now, we can be submitting an amendment to the application that, uh, that we had put in this year, if the cards would line up to do that and, and we could conceivably be applying for implementation funds at that point in time, but uh, that all remains to be determined. I think uh, in the shorter term future, probably we're best to wait until after the January sixth meeting with DNR, the, the water board and assuming that we uh, will be approved there, I think our first step would be the formation of a stakeholder group to, to really begin looking at this as a, as a comprehensive program. So uh, I'll pause there for questions, discussion.
Okay, Dan, um, with that January sixth meeting, is it possible for them to reduce the amount, uh, or have a decision? They can reject it or do they accept it? Or is there like a halfway point where they like only give two-thirds of the funding on approval? If you know, I, I'm just curious and I don't mean to make this more confusing.
I, I'm gonna jump in here because in talking with the DNR staff, people that we've worked with, because I asked them that question, basically that same question, and they said historically, the, the Board of Water and Natural Resources has, uh, has not adjusted the, the decision made by the task force. That's what he said, historically they haven't tinkered with, uh, reducing the amount and that sort of thing.
I had actually asked them if there was ever a known case where they changed it and they're not aware that there has ever been.
Yeah, I think, I think you, you and I were there when we were talking to them a lot because we asked that same question and they said, well, the task force approves it, they pretty much go with the recommendations.
So I, I, my sense is that there would be a higher likelihood that the EPA budgets could change than that there would be a change from the task force.
Yeah.
Apparently, the last time the Trump administration came in and, and the Trump budget, they zeroed out the non-point source program, but, but uh, it ended up bouncing back into the congressional budget.
All right, any, any questions here, Dan or Ron, about where we are in this thing?
I, I suspect, you know, I had not asked the question whether or not we would typically expect to show up at that meeting, but I, I assume we wanna be represented. Um, so you know, probably be a good idea that maybe we wanna authorize somebody to attend that meeting.
Yeah.
I think we can do that without a vote, probably.
Sure. Any suggestions?
Which one of you wants to go?
I won't be in the country.
You're going.
Well, I've been following it all.
I, I will say, you know, Dan gave the presentation at the, at the task force and did a great job, I thought.
Yeah, he did a great job.
He had a fantastic job presenting that information and obviously it was successful, so.
Well, all the, the decisions had been made long before those presentations were, were given, but.
Well, one of the things that we talked about, I mean, there's two hundred thousand dollars that we, we made me ask them, some of our people out here for, maybe taking a little money too, maybe getting Christian Park or some of those, that's why I wanted you to listen. I won't, I won't be covering, but anyway, it's a, it's a plus for, especially under the Rapid Creek part.
Just a comment, um, and it's a bigger umbrella comment, but it's kind of a big deal to get a new three nineteen project authorized. It sets us up for essentially many, many years of, of work that can be really beneficial, even if it's only in the Rapid Creek watershed. Um, uh, the planning projects are gonna be really enlightening, I think, on how we can best prioritize our, our efforts. Um, the two design projects were kind of easy choices to put as priorities, um, for, for, for this first segment. So it's really quite a thing that we got this, um, sort of started and uh, for example, the Belfus district, I think is in like their twelfth year of continually working on things that they wanna get done. So it's a pretty significant win, I think, for our efforts.
Yeah. Well, I guess we're through with that item. Okay, moving on to thirteen, two-year no cost extension to December of twenty twenty-six for our agreement with the City of Rapid City for erosion control at Star Village. There's apparently a remaining budget of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents remaining on our original authorization for that project. Dan, you gotta comment on that one?
I'll just start out with a, a little bit of background. For the next four items are obviously pretty similar, two-year no-cost extensions for three different projects involving four different entities. So uh, typically at this time of year, we will renew our, our agreement, say with the, the city for our Star Village project, uh, for one year. Um, the reason I've gone to a, requesting a two-year extension, um, is because of the, the three nineteen application. We know that it'll basically be two years before the, uh, major funding at the earliest would, would start rolling. And so, you know, I thought it would be, you know, useful to consider extending for two years instead of one, just to continue doing maintenance level efforts. Um, there's, there's some likelihood that on any of these projects, at some point in time, we might wanna add some additional funding to them depending on needs that might come along. But, but at this point in time, all four of these projects have enough funding in them to do maintenance level efforts and, you know, I see no reason to boost, uh, funding amounts until, until we would see a use, a need for the funding, you know, something that really needs to be done. So um, I have, I have discussed the, the two-year extension with, with all of the entities involved, uh, Parks Department, City Parks Department for the Star Village in La Croix, uh, the ZDIC management for the, their share of the Star Village project and then Tom Keck who, who represents the, uh, the group at the Raider Park project out there by Stevens High and, you know, they're all comfortable with a two-year extension and adding no funds at this point in time. So with uh, those things as background, I guess I'll just start with, with item twelve and I'll, I'll move for a.
Item thirteen.
Or thirteen, excuse me, a, a, a two-year no-cost extension, uh, for our Star Village project with the City of Rapid City Parks Department.
Second.
Of course, I've been made in the second to approve the two-year no-cost extension to the City of Rapid City for erosion control at Star Village. Uh, discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I got a question for Dan. Uh, where are we from the original plan? Because if I remember right, it was twenty twenty-two when we started this one?
Um, do you mean in terms of expenditures or just plans in general?
Like, since this project had started. If I remember right, it was twenty twenty-two because the pictures were in December of twenty twenty-one.
Right. The, the plan that is in place would be unchanged. The, the written plan, um, you know, we're suggesting no change to the plan, if that's the question.
Okay. And then, so then kind of the follow-up has the, um, the items on the ground, has, has that changed or is it just the same plan that we've been doing since, since it was proposed in twenty twenty-two?
each of them are a little different, but I guess let's, let's deal specifically with, with Star Village. Um, the original plan was, was recognizing there, there was no set timeframe for when did we expect to complete it. There, we knew it was a long-term effort and we didn't know what it was gonna take to tackle it. Uh, so we started chipping away at the edges. Uh, since the three nineteen opportunity has come along, to some extent we've, we've shifted gears towards, rather than working towards what would be, how would we fix the entirety of it, we have just continued to do what we had started with and that stabilizing the edges and then the places that were partial vegetation, getting ready to blow out, prevent them from blowing out. So to some extent, what we actually have been doing the past couple of years is not necessarily identical to what's on paper, but it, everybody seems to be aware of that. Everybody being, you know, City of Rapid City is, is comfortable with what we're doing in there. They have no anticipation of us trying to fix it immediately. They're, they're well aware of the three nineteen program and that we're just kind of in a holding pattern there.
Would it be better to close out this project and then submit in January kind of a new revamped plan in it, in uh, preparation for the three nineteen? So that the books that shows that it was closed out and then started, start anew with the new year, since we kinda have a longer-term goal with the three nineteen coming in a couple of years down the road?
Uh, in my opinion, certain, certainly not for, um, there was never an intent that there would be an end date. You know, it was basically a long-range plan of, here's our initial thoughts on how to do it. Um, there's been, nobody speak of a need for, you know, closing it out to, to have to develop a new plan means then we have to put together a new agreement with them and go through a process where, uh, we have stipulated that in order to extend it, all we need is, is concurrence by exchange of email. So um, that's what had been done. This, this extension would be, I think, probably our third extension. I think the initial agreement was set up for one year. I think we've probably extended twice. So um, speaking for myself, I'm certainly would not look forward to having to develop new agreements and, and go through that process when, uh, extension seems to be, you know, very palatable.
Ron has a question.
Oh, right, right. Oh, I've just got some comments and then I may make a alternative motion, a substitute motion. I think it's probably, um, you know, reasonable to think that things have changed out there as you've kinda described. Uh, we're on our third extension. Um, we have four new directors coming on in the coming year. Uh, we may have some new sort of guidelines or sideboards for how we proceed with director responsibilities and small group actions on agreements with outside entities. And so I think it's probably in our best interest to, you know, even though we may wanna continue to do things similarly, refresh our agreement with the City of Rapid City in this case and to reinforce, you know, what we have as expectations from their side of the coin, uh, since it's their land and uh, what their expectations are from us as a, a board with volunteers and some expenditure authority. So I'd make a substitute motion that we would close this agreement out at this point, um, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and re-establish a new agreement, uh, under the, under, uh, in, in January of twenty twenty-five.
Sure, second to the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Discussion on the motion, on the substitute motion.
The only other thing that I guess I would add to that is, um, when we did have our executive committee meeting, and this holds true for items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, we thought that a two-year extension was, um, really inappropriate given the.
the the things that have taken place since the initiation of all these projects and the future going forward with the potential for three nineteen money, and the fact that we're, uh, we just need to close these out and start afresh. And the recommendation was for all projects from thirteen through sixteen on the agenda to be closed out and started anew in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, discussion on the substitute motion. Dan?
Well, I guess the motion has already been been made. Um, you know, as as far as a two-year extension versus a a one-year extension, um, you know, I would certainly be in favor of a one-year extension, and that gives us one year then to really do the planning for for a new agreement, and then we could put together one new agreement for the for the future, um, as opposed to a new agreement for one year, and then a new agreement once we know more about the the three nineteen program. So I guess I'll offer another substitute motion to revise this to to a one-year no-cost extension.
Is there a second to the second substitute motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion on the second substitute motion.
So you're you're looking for your substitute for the one year for more about using this time to transition from what we had currently agreed to
Right.
way back when, and to clean it up so that if it needs to go forward after after that one year, that a new agreement for a whatever the longer-term purposes would that be? Am I understanding what the intent is?
I think so. That would give us one year to transition. We'd do a simple extension, and then basically, we've got a year to to basically for a planning process to really come up with where will we go? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on the second substitute motion? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the second substitute motion? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
No.
One no. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. I assume that the rest is going to continue on. And these other items, too, they're not.
Well, I guess that's one down. So item fourteen is the extension for Star Village with Zadik property management. And the the wording that I had provided earlier, you know, for Dan Malali for the motion, um, I think we could change that easily. I guess at this point in time, I would suggest that my motion, rather than a two-year no-cost extension, would be a one-year no-cost extension.
I'm wondering if we can handle handles other two out of one motion.
Um,
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
I think we probably could.
What's left to be done on sixteen under the current? What's left?
That's Raider Park.
No, yeah, yeah.
Raider Park.
There are activities that remain to to be done.
Activities?
I was hoping Tom Keck could be here tonight, and but but there are areas yet to work in. You know, we've covered perhaps half of the areas that he had in mind.
You know, I was volunteering on pretty much all of that out there, and there's there's various that still need to be addressed out there. I know that. We just didn't have time to get it all done.
And that's the only one I'd be supportive of any extensions on. We need to restart with that Star Village stuff and the city agreements.
Well, we can take them one at a time.
I think that would be best, just repoting, since they're all separate entities.
Let's do that. And fourteen, you and you made a motion then for for a one-year.
A one-year extension.
Is there a second? Oh, Scott, did you second that?
I did.
Okay. Discussion on that motion.
I guess.
Just see a gen item, but it's one year.
Yeah, fourteen is one year.
I guess.
Through December twenty twenty-five.
Clear.
Everybody clear on the motion?
Uh, I think.
Okay.
As far as discussion, I'll mention there's been kind of a steady progression of changes in management there. And it had been some time since I'd actually met a manager, but here I recently did meet the manager there that's been in place now for some time. And, you know, we looked at toured things and talked about things, and, you know, he's comfortable with what we're doing. And at least I've got a contact there again.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion?
Have they helped at all with the, in addition to the project, or because it seems like it's a higher dollar amount that's just kind of sitting there. So I'm just curious if anything, if on that Zadik side, it has been used, or if it's just side of use. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of on how how things are working out.
Funding-wise, it just depends on how much I estimate when I divvy out expenses, what belongs to one property versus the other. So so that's kind of happenstance. There's there's was never a requirement that they would contribute effort. They what they contribute is ten percent reimbursement on the dollar of of our expenditures, and that has not changed.
So it's more
Have we collected anything from them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So it's more permission to be on the ten percent plus if you guys do work on that. I just want to make sure that they're still wanting and to and are being involved, so.
One one things that's actually quite important is that it's very hard to get to the property that's owned by the city without going through the Zadik property. And we granted, basically, our agreement, uh, there's not a lot of legalese behind that, but it says that each entity will allow access, you know, and that is important.
Any more questions? Any just more discussion?
Well, I think that as we go forward, if we get this extension, if it does get approved, you know, for one year, I think part of that renegotiation needs to be an examination of the cost share that might be appropriate for the work that's being done there. Ten percent is pretty minimal for the benefits received.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the one-year no-cost extension with our agreement with Zadik property at the erosion control at Star Village? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
One no from Ron. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item fifteen. Is there a motion on that one?
So I will move for a one-year extension through December of twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
And the motion that's been made and seconded to for a one-year no-cost extension?
And I'll I'll add just some specifics, a general specific that, um, there are several of the bare shale erosion areas that that we do hope to be able to topsoil, uh, working in conjunction with the city, you know, at some point in time scheduled to be determined. But beyond that, with the the leaf litter, if in fact that is successful and and really does begin to hold enough material in place and encourage enough vegetation growth, the anticipation, my anticipation would be that there would have to be maintenance there in the future. Um, you know, I would expect that it would be less maintenance each year. Um, but I think I think we will need to expect to maintain some level of activity there. But I think, again, with a a one-year extension and and see where we're at with our bare ground areas, and then we can, you know, have a little bit more of a plan in place for the future. But we're pretty close to closing this one out, but it will require maintenance.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Question.
So we have a motion, right?
We have a motion, yes, and seconded. Motion, Chris, can second it, by Scott?
I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So with this, with the maintenance, would that fall upon this board or the city, or has that been discussed, or that should be one of the things that gets discussed in this transition period?
I think the leaf litter thing is likely to be a West Dakota effort. I don't I don't see the city doing that. They
Did you did you seed that area, or?
Yeah.
Okay, because you were talking about seeding it. You did that, or?
I I waited until after the fact to to seed it. I'm trying that this time around, yeah, but I
That's done, good.
I, well, I actually have about twenty percent of it. My bucket ran dry. I gotta get another bucket full out there.
Oh, okay. Did you get the motion in?
Yes. Motion by Driscoll, seconded by McGregor, to approve a one-year cost extension through December twenty twenty-five for our agreement with the City of Rapid City for erosion control in La Croix Lakes Disc Golf.
Okay. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Who is saying sign?
Oh.
Ron, no from Ron. Motion carries. Okay, that was item fifteen, item sixteen. Next motion on that one?
One-year extension through December twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion on that motion.
Hey, Dan, when was the last time we worked on that one?
Uh, this spring.
Okay.
This summer, whatever. Several several different times. We we had an initial thrust. I don't remember exactly when, where we, you know, did some major efforts in several areas. And then then we, um, basically had a second iteration where we covered some trails, and then they had some volunteers that that helped with with putting down blanket and things like that. So.
One thing about this project, I mean, with Tom Keck and Seth, I mean, they they were out there, and they were rounding up volunteers and stuff more so than some of these other projects. Like, the city didn't really put a lot of effort into Star Village versus what what they do over there, have done over there to Raider Park with with volunteers.
Yeah, there's a good group there.
Did you get that motion in, Dan?
Yeah, motion by Driscoll, seconded by McGregor, to approve a one-year no-cost extension through December twenty twenty-five for our agreement with the Tom Spife Memorial Foundation for Erosion Control at Raider Park.
Very good. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is saying sign? Motion carries. All right, I guess it's two.
Director called to not vote.
He voted.
I voted in favor.
In favor.
All in favor.
Oh, item sixteen. Yep.
Item sixteen. Yeah, this is this is item seventeen. Move to item seventeen, bylaw change for director sponsor requirements for projects. This requires a two-third vote. And you have that? Could you put that up on the screen? I could do that, yeah.
It is in the packet.
It is in the packet, but it is for our two guests. Case it interested you. I'm not planning on reading the thing. But we've had discussion about this in the past, so, um, is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Move by Ron. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Thomas. I can get that up here, so I can take a look at it.
Catch this while I can here.
Okay.
Okay, let's see here.
Hard to read, but yeah, that's that's the content of the motion right there. Any discussion on the motion?
I don't grasp the purpose of this. It seems very unwieldy to me. So for anything we provide funding to or participate in?
No. Anything we sponsor.
Does anything sponsored or participated in?
Well, that was supposed to have been gone long ago, but it's sponsored. I have no idea why it's still there. We talked about that at the very first iteration of it.
Uh-huh.
I don't know how it's that text is there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was that's old text.
Do we have a copy of the new text here?
I don't have paperwork with me, but I'm pretty sure that was
It should be the one in the center of the email.
That was a discussion at the very first point, and that was removed immediately.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's
So good catch.
Yeah.
But it appeared to have come back.
You
It came back.
Well, we did have it at the meeting last year, right?
We did, yeah. Is that is that in the minutes of it? Let's go back and look at the minutes a second. October meeting, see what it says there.
Here it is. There's the the text is in the minutes of the meeting. It's on page ten of the packet.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, we got that text. That's the appropriate text that we're supposed to be voting on.
We normally want to pick up the
Okay.
Good catch.
Just take a step backwards and do it right.
Yeah.
That's a good catch.
Yeah. So I'll withdraw my motion based on the erroneous text.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the text for the bylaw amendment as included on page ten of twenty-six of the current meeting packet under agenda item eleven minutes.
Okay. Is there a second? Agree with that?
I really agree with that.
Which what's agenda is that again?
It was
Eleven.
Minutes.
Eleven in the October minutes.
Use it.
Right there.
Okay, okay, good.
So there it is. You guys have copies here, so let's switch things over here. So as per the October minutes, is that?
Yep.
Yeah, agenda number eleven.
So an example of a covered project would be like the BOR Water Smart Study. Would that be one?
That'd be one.
Yeah.
The all the agreements and negotiations that a single director's been doing with the city for Star Village would be another one. That's a that's a that's a West Dakota sponsored effort. The three nineteen deal, you know, that deal with the D A N R, that would be an example of one. Basically, things that we initiate and sponsor and manage. We need to have more than a single director being the voice of the water board when we're dealing with outside entities, essentially. It's only for our own protection.
Did you understand that, Sarah? You still there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, that was kind of the gist of what our discussion was.
Okay, we got the motion there. So any more discussion on the motion?
What's what is contemplated by managed? Is that mostly, does it be an administrative management, or? West Dakota, so I guess that, that does not refer to something like Galen brings to us today.
Correct.
We do not have to have. There's no involvement there.
Right.
As we discuss, yeah, go ahead.
So I think the intent, as I recall, the, the original wording on, on this in the packet for October was projects or initiatives to be sponsored or participated in, and, and that got changed, I think, at the suggestion of, of Craig Care. So, so this all seems to be alluding to what happens when a project gets proposed. So the wording, if we go back to the wording on page ten of twenty-six, projects initiated or managed, and then et cetera, et cetera, may designate leads. So the next to the last sentence in there, any official West Dakota communications on a proposed project must be coordinated through the chairman and the ad hoc group of two or three directors. Emphasis on proposed project. Final sentence, two or three of four directors must agree on actions to be communicated. What I'm hearing now is that this applies to how we manage projects and the impetus, it will not fall on one purpose of one director. So what I'm hearing is that this applies not to what's proposed as stated in the, uh, wording, but the intent is, is how we manage these things. So, um, it looks like if, for instance, I've got a day when I'd like to spread leaves, I have to have a committee of at least three people and two of them have to agree that the, the date that we want to set for spreading leaves is, is an acceptable date.
I think you might be reading a little bit too much into this as you propose to try and, uh, change the meaning and the intent of it. The third line down at the end says, the chairman may identify a primary designated lead from West Dakota. And so in this case, as you propose your theoretical, if the chairman has designated you as the lead for an activity that we have initiated and are managing, you then lead that project and you communicate with the rest of the group what's going on, just like you probably do now via email. So there's no change there if you're the designated lead.
I, I see this as, you know, when you're initiating the project, you have input from three or four more directors directly on the, on the, the project itself. Once the project is approved, then the chairman would, could, could assign one person, one director as a lead on that project that's already been approved by the board with, with involvement from three to four people on the initial proposal. Is that, is that kind of a cover? You think that's?
I think generally speaking, yeah, but the idea is to have more than a single individual initiate and get projects, you know, uh, you know, going under the auspices of the board. Um, we've, we've seen some, we've seen, and I'm not going to go into any of the details, but this is an important protection for the board as we work with outside entities.
What do we need protection from?
Well, I guess we can get into the details.
On their own.
You don't get a real director doing something that you don't like.
Yeah, exactly. We can't have one director going and, and, you know, agreeing, have agreeing with a potential stakeholder on, on something that the board has not already approved. We, 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 we gotta stop doing that.
We've already seen that happen. This is a, this is a, this is a stop, this is something we need to do to prevent this from the future, uh, future occurrences, and I don't really want to go into any of the past occurrences in this context, uh, context. But it's a good protection mechanism for the board going forward.
So once the project's approved and underway, this wouldn't apply?
It could.
It could, it could, but, but the chairman could assign one director to kind of take the lead on it, once, once the project's approved and funded.
I don't read it that way.
You don't?
No, with, with, beyond the proposed project language, in the last sentence, the, the second line says, with the development of a project or initiative. And then the sentence after that, the chairman may identify, my, from, would, would modify the development. I mean, that would be interpreted as referring back to the three or four directors involved with the development. So I say, I see nothing in this language that would carry over to after a project has been approved by the board, developed and approved.
Well, it just, just seems kind of like a.
Well, this has been floating around now for several months.
Yeah, it has been.
So it's unfortunate that we're at this point in the cycle to have it be, um, actually read.
Yeah, it should, that shouldn't have been addressed a lo, a long time.
A long time ago.
A long time ago, instead of here tonight. Any more discussion on the motion? Man?
Again, lots of confusion, so if we talk about projects that are going to be initiated, the very first sentence must have no fewer than three or more than four. Of course, we can't have more than four. It, uh, if you're going to meet, it becomes a, a quorum, but must have no fewer than three directly involved with the, the development of a project. So that's to say that there's basically no way a single director can say, well, here's a project that I think would be good and, and throw it up for a vote of the board. Uh, nine directors, nine votes, you know, these examples that are being tossed around before we just voted on, the, the Raider Park proposal. I specifically recall that, uh, beyond myself, Dan Birkey had been involved and, and brought in Ron Coth in the, the, the planning process to, you know, trade thoughts and make sure we had a good plan in place for the, the Star Village and La Croix examples. I think it was probably, I'm sure you were involved with me in the discussions with Wagers and Parks Department, you know, it was, it was two directors, uh, now we need three, I guess. Um, I will vote no.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign.
Aye.
Go call, please.
Motion by Coth, seconded by Mac, to amend the bylaws as per the October minutes, agenda item eleven in the packet. Coth?
Aye.
Birkey?
Aye.
Driscoll?
No.
McGregor?
No.
Row?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Okay, that's a two-thirds vote, so motion carries. We have four ayes.
Four ayes and two no. Motion carries. Okay, heading, bylaw change defining executive committee, this requires a two-thirds vote also. I see your names on there.
Correct. I guess in considering the motion we just covered, it, looking at the bylaws and policy, it, uh, looked like there were some gaps there, uh, one I could not find anywhere where the chairman was specifically given authority to, to appoint committees, uh, so the wording in red would add that under the, the duties of the chairman, and even though the executive committee is referred to in several locations, there is no authority for an entity such as an executive committee, so that would be added. So I guess I'll move to the effect of this wording.
Second.
Seconded by, motion made by Driscoll, seconded by Ron. Um, discussion on the motion. Do you, do you want to put that up? In, put that right there. Put it in the packet, please.
Yeah, give me a second.
Sure.
I just wanted to be known, I appreciate Driscoll in the red line in section A using he or she. Granted, we're all men here, but it is nice to be aware of that, so I just wanted Driscoll to know I appreciate that. And Cheryl's not here, but here, so I, I want that to also be known on the record that I.
Yeah, I am, I am actually here.
See, you are here. And that is a very important direction, I must say.
Apologies for that.
You, you can thank the wording in the sentences that precede that. I didn't come up with that myself.
Oh, I just thought of the record, so I apologize.
There it is.
It's kind of dropped it all on here.
Yeah, it's good, yeah. Okay. Any more?
So the, this is a new section to be added, right?
It's all laid out right there.
Oh, it's a, it's an amendment of an existing.
Let's just add section two.
Correct, yeah.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I didn't go back and check the statutes, but I don't see anything in the bylaws that provide for the election of officers in their terms of office. Is that in the statutes, do you know?
Well, that's the state, because you have a Secretary of State deal.
I'm not sure.
I can look it up myself later, but.
Secret.
You know, so, if, if it's not there, we should come back with another bylaw that provides for that.
Yeah.
Well, the bylaws does define the officers.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that the officers will be appointed or how they're, how they're selected or for what term of office. It says, we'll have a chairman who will reside over the, preside over the meetings, but it doesn't say the chairman shall be elected annually for a term of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five years.
I, I think, you know, for a division of the state of South Dakota, which is under the Secretary of State as far as elections go.
No.
It's not?
No. I'll, I'll check it out.
Okay.
If I, if I need to propose something, I'll bring it to the next meeting, but much, much like Dan identified the gap for the executive committee, I'm not sure that we don't also have a gap for determination on election officers.
All right, any more questions? Any more discussion on the motion?
Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same, pull the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan, for doing that. So, let's see. Go on to Chair's house.
Nope.
No, we got a vote.
We got another night. We got, uh, agenda item nineteen.
All right.
And then we got the plot seal after support. You get the, you, we, we got a little bit more to go, you know, we're, we're making this one extra long since it's your last one.
You are stressing it out, okay. Heading nineteen, policy change defining authority to appoint committee. That requires two, two-thirds vote, too. Another one.
So the proposed changes shown there again, uh, this looked to be like a reasonable alternative as opposed to the, uh, bylaw that we enacted regarding initiated projects and the like, but, uh, we really have no provision for what committees need to do and the like, so I will move to enact the changes shown in our policy, the addition.
You have a second to the motion?
Are we eliminating that paragraph at the bottom of twenty-five, top of twenty-six then? I ask that because we're, we're changing the name of the title of the policy and then we'll go right away into a, a new paragraph.
You mean the paragraph that followed?
Is this paragraph up here? The paragraph that's at the bottom of twenty-five and the top of twenty-six before changes for policy shown in red. Are we keeping that or is that being struck?
No, it, I guess there's, in the new version, that pol, that same statement would immediately follow that in red, so.
Okay.
The heading says committee and representation of the board, so.
Okay.
The new wording says.
So that would, the first paragraph would become the second paragraph.
Right.
And then the third paragraph would remain the third paragraph.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Any more discussion?
Was there a second?
No, there wasn't a second. You're right.
Oh, second.
Okay, you're right, there was a second. Seconded by Scott. Now, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Now, this thing here. Oh, yeah. We got this additional item regarding, uh, our membership in the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems provides the opportunity for your sanitary water development district to vote for a board member on, on that, and, uh, there's two candidates for a Class C director. One is Jay Gilbertson, East, representing East Dakota Water Development District, and the other one is Edward C. Mills, representing the Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. So we need to decide which of the two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the West Dakota Water Development cast its vote for a Class C director for the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems for Jay Gilbertson.
Is there a second to the motion?
All second.
Seconded by Thomas. Did you get all that, yeah?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Was there a second?
No, there wasn't a second, you're right.
Oh, second.
Okay, you're right, there wasn't a second. Seconded by Scott. Now, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign? Motion carries. Now. This thing here.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. We got this additional item regarding. Our membership in the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems provides the opportunity for your sanitary water development district to vote for a board member on, on that, and uh. There's two candidates for a class C director, one is Jay Gilbertson, east, representing East Dakota Water Development District. And the other one is Edward C. Mills, representing the Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. So we need to decide which of the two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the West Dakota Water Development cast its. Vote for a class C director for the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems for Jay Gilbertson.
Is you're second to the motion?
Both second.
Seconded by Tom. Did you get all that, yeah?
Uh-huh. Is he called the director of?
Class C. Class C director.
Class C director. Of the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems.
Right.
For Jay.
The motion that West Dakota Water Development District has voted in South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems, class C director for Jay Gilbertson.
Right. Any discussion on the motion?
Is there a second?
That was me.
Yeah, Tom is second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Now.
Now.
Please God, time is short. And the chairman. Well, as you know, this is my last meeting, official meeting, I'm still, still on the board to run the year, but uh. I just want to say, you know, it's been a pleasure, I, I served here for two times. And it's been absolute pleasure for me to have that opportunity to do it, and. I know the, the board, current board in good hands going forward, you're going to have some new members coming on, as you know, through in the January. And I'd like to recognize uh. Some of our directors that uh. Moved out of the area. And uh, we have vacancies for those two directors, Robert Ackerman and Dennis Fleming. Who put their time in with the, with the board, and then Cheryl Rowe, who's also did not, decided not to run for another term, so. I appreciate your efforts, uh, on being involved in the board. And uh, see, what else was I going to say, I think that was about it. Any other items from directors? Ron, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted, I have a couple of things I want to bring forward, but I also wanted to express my appreciation for um, Dan's uh. Job as, as chairman and his real active involvement in all the things that we've been involved in on the, in the six years that I've been on the board.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're here. I would like to add a chair's comment, um, I'd like to appreciate you, uh. We came in when we were the only two votes on most of the things that we agreed upon, and this board has changed. And I do appreciate your leadership in cutting down meetings to under three hours, so I do appreciate that, if you've known the history of this board. But just for this one time, I think we're going to be about two and a half, so. Just to give you that old timey feel, but thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I do want to thank you for your leadership, and I think I'm recovering from most of your gavel bruises imposed on me over the years. But I, I also wanted to add it that, you know, the governor gave her budget message the first of December. And in the budget that's uh, coming up that will take effect first of July, as recommended by the governor, there is about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars decrease in federal funding. For state activities this year, good share of that in water. Related issues, so I suspect over the next few years, we're going to be seeing, we're going to be noticing a real contraction. In monies available for water development projects. As we go forward.
Okay, I, yeah, you're totally right. Do you want, do you have something, Cheryl?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, um. It was a pleasure to um, work with everyone on the board, um, thanks, Dan.
You bet.
Sharing, and uh, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a pleasure, it's been fun.
Well, we, we certainly enjoyed your presence, I'll tell you that.
I learned a lot.
Thank you, Cheryl, for your, your efforts.
Couldn't have been that much fun, Cheryl, you're leaving.
She's down in sunny, southern, sunny, southern Calif, southern South Carolina.
Yeah, it would not be fair if I stayed on and, and uh, wouldn't be at meetings, because you, you really need to be there physically, so. Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you. Ron?
Other than giving you accolades, I had three quick items.
Okay.
Number one, um, I think that in the very near future, our administrator is going to post the uh. Short story on the update of, on our Pactola Deerfield modeling project, as we got it from Barr and the rest of the consulting group that's going forward. They've been successful to get out and do the survey this fall, they've got a, a base model built for the river shed, um. I'll let that posting, you know, on the website, and maybe a special email with just that email I got from.
Yeah, it's there.
It's there, okay, very good, it's there on the website. Um, the other thing is that um. Uh, in October, we talked about these administrative contract, uh, we do have a signed contract with Dr. Larry Stettler. That transition will start in January of twenty twenty-five, with full implementation of his taking over that role, um, earlier and later in the spring. And we also have a signed contract with the Anna De Smith CPA Group to migrate our finances from spreadsheet based deal to uh, QuickBooks Online, and then to provide, you know, monthly reconciliations and other services. And that is underway, uh. Dan has provided her with, um, you know, all of the background data that she needs to begin that setup and migration, and. Training will probably take place in January, so it can be done between both Dan and Dr. Stettler.
Yeah.
That's it.
When is our next meeting?
Uh, January fourteenth, if I remember track the second Tuesday.
Right.
Cause usually.
Schedule of the January meeting.
Then we'll decide the rest of the schedule for the year.
And usually that, the way that schedule works is then we, the last meeting in that schedule is the next January meeting for twenty twenty-six.
Right.
Just so that. There's a little bit of overlap, so when the board does change over eventually, um, that people at least have that meeting scheduled, then the board isn't looking at it on that.
I can't believe I'll be starting my fifth year already. Time five.
I'll be starting seven.
One, one thing, on the January, since you know, I'm not going to be the chairman, I won't be there, so. I assume that uh, the, Tom says our vice chair will, they start the meeting, you know, and get to, get down to the elections of officers, that part of it, so.
I assume, since you won't be there, we'll all be talking about you.
I'll have, you know, there might be a canary in the cave.
You can come, I won't be here, so. I'm going to be fishing.
He's going to be fishing.
Oh, Alaska?
Belize.
Belize?
And I don't go to Alaska and Jolene in January.
What do you catch down in Belize?
Bonefish, uh, you try and see and catch permit, um, Jack crevalle, baby tarpon, uh, barracuda, all on fly rod.
Wow. Boy. Okay.
Okay, one more.
I had a director item, if we're still on that one.
We are, yep.
Um. I thought it might be nice to consider. I don't know if I'd use the word honoring, but have a farewell of sorts for outgoing directors. Uh, following our January fourteenth meeting, I'd ask Chairman Birkey if he might be interested in attending such a thing if we did. Um, I checked at the Elk's Lodge, they've got a, a room that can be used, no charge, it'd be. Order on your own if you wanted to order anything, or just stop in for, to say hello, um. We'd have to be careful about quorums and the like, but uh. Those that are no longer a director don't count towards a quorum, so I guess the question would be first, would any of the outgoing directors. Expect to be here and present where you could have such a, an affair, and would you be wanting to do so?
I'm definitely not going to be there.
You're, you're not going to be there, right?
No.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be the only one there.
The only one.
Right, well, I mean, the intent would be that we would, you know, basically open it up to the public, too, you know, people that you've worked with over the years and been involved with from the West Dakota standpoint.
Yeah, we could dial you in, Cheryl.
Dial me in.
So it'd basically be a matter of word of mouth invitation to, you know, people that we've worked with around the community and the like.
Linda Harris would probably be interested in hanging out with you guys.
Well, and I'm thinking also of a lot of these different entities with whom we've worked, whether it's.
Sure.
Bureau of Act or the city, or this, or that, or there's a Missouri River Water Group, and on and on and on and on, so.
I think an informal meeting wouldn't hurt.
It's not as formal meeting, an informal affair.
Affair, thank you, thank you, I need to probably work up.
Call it an open house.
An open house.
Yeah, problem solved, yeah, exactly, Barry, thank you. So I guess the question is, would you attend? I, I, I would, yeah. Okay, well, let's do it. I might just, I might just show up in meetings.
I will, I will schedule us, you know, to reserve the room, like I say, there's no charge for the room, they just have a little side room that they can reserve, and. We'll just have to make sure that our nose count is, is no more than four.
You don't need to worry about it, it's an open meeting, open house. Not, it's a done deal, I was on the school board, and we had a Christmas dinner. All the board members were there, staff, some of the staff was there, business manager, never was an issue with quorum about anything, because you're not doing any business.
Yeah, I, I, you know, when I worked for the city, the city, the South Dakota Municipal League had an annual meeting. Where council members would show up, but from, based on what the city attorney had to have, Bob Jackson said, you know, you're not doing any business. All the members of the council, if they still choose, can be in attendance to the South Dakota Municipal League.
I'm good with that, we won't have to provide any guidance on counting noses.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Barry, ahead.
Sure.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to items from the admin.
Let me grab a microphone here.
Okay.
I've got a bad connection. Like to just uh, thank the outgoing directors for their work, and Cheryl, your work as secretary and help with the website, and get me untangled here. And. Director Birkey is a pretty good chairman, because. We've, we've seen very few violations of parliament, parliamentary protocol. Part of my job is to keep you guys honest, and I've rarely had to jump in and say anything, so thank you, Dan, for that.
You bet, thank you.
According to, switching topics here, according to Sandy McLean. They're going to start on this Keystone Bridge next week.
Yeah.
I forgot who she said is, I thought I had who's doing the work here, but um. They're actually going to do another bridge. The Third Street Bridge, which is not, isn't part of our project, but um. She mentioned that, then she said the DOT will be tearing up the bridge on sixteen A, but anyway, the point is they're going to finally start work. We've talked about PFAS at the guard. Water development districts are not having their legislative booths next year, so. But the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems will be having their annual meeting the fifteenth. And that's also the date that the eighth annual technical conference will be, so if you're interested in going there. That's the conference where everybody knows Birkey. I, Thomas Mack and I were there with Birkey, and it seemed like every other person shook Birkey's hand and congratulated him on something, but um. Anyway, um, I, I might.
That tells you when you're, you're getting old.
It is, yeah. I might go just for fun, but not sure yet. Um, yeah, I think you've all been aware of Jay Gilbertson's legislation that eliminates the vacation, or vacancy petition requirement. So that was just. We're the only entity in the state of South Dakota that had that requirement, so that pretty much just puts us on par with everybody else. There's a financial report due January thirty-first with the state of South Dakota. And I'm not sure if we had talked with, when Anna was meeting with us about them doing it. So I'm not sure if I should do that, I should plan on that, or if they should do that.
That's a big question for, for her, I guess.
Okay. I put up some stuff that Ron gave me for the Barr project on the website. One of them is an email, so it's a little bit clunky, I kind of wordsmithed it a little bit, but. Ron, if you want to look at that, see if it's okay.
Okay.
It's easy to change.
Me, probably.
I don't know if you've been watching the news lately, there've been some open meeting violations, so. I guess, and maybe it's Marty Jackley started up the. Open Meetings Committee again, and there are two local entities that. One got in trouble, and one potentially is in trouble, so. It's good that we're careful about our motions, and everything we vote on is carefully documented, and um. The money is properly accounted for. So January, I have a notary lined up to come in for swearing in the new directors, um. But as we transition to the new admin. We're going to have to get my name off of this stuff. Looking at this, you'd think I'm a pretty important person, I'm. With the ASAP.gov site, I'm the book entry, adjuster, the payment requestor, the notification reviewer, the requestor report reviewer, the recipient report viewer. Point of contact, I'm the head of organization, sorry, Dan. I'm the financial officer, and I'm the authorizing official, so. Need to put somebody else's names in there.
You're VIP.
Yeah, yeah. And that'll do it, thank you, everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, have a Merry Christmas to you. Is there anything from Barry today?
Yes.
All right, very.
Three items, first, I echo Tom's comments, reference the old meetings, I've been coming to these since at least seven, twenty thirteen. I've heard more of these meetings than anybody in this room. Frankly, they're much better than they were when I started. And LNI is coming up tomorrow, starting. Encourage everybody to attend, and I don't know if you're aware, the business card I handed out to Black Hills Environmental Coalition. We're on two years old now, almost, and we have, uh, we're awarded, a couple of months ago, we got twenty thousand dollars from, in grants. One from the Black Hills Area Community Foundation, and one from Visit Rapid City. And those are to be spent in a collaborative effort between two outside groups, not the Black Hills Environmental Coalition, can't just go out and cooperate with somebody. It's like Black Hills Clean Water, and DRAA, or the Fly Fishermen, or somebody like that. Wants to get together and do a project with somebody else, we can help fund some of that, perhaps, we'll bet all that good stuff, but there is some money there, and uh, we'll hopefully raise some more. And, but we're looking for money that uh. Is a little more loose, can be more freely spent, for like. Want to hire a bookkeeper, we're trying not to become a C, five oh one C three. But I'm afraid it's going to happen, our fiscal partner right now is the. Black Hills Parks and Forest Association, they write, they hold our money in account, we can write the check, but they do the disbursement, etc., it's a fiscal responsibility, so. Black Hills Environmental didn't have to do anything, and we don't want, but it's going to happen, I'm afraid, down the road. So, that's all we have.
Hey, you could put a little money into our stream restoration work coming up during the year.
Well, if we have the money available, possible, I don't know.
We have, you know, we have two hundred thousand, but we're looking for stakeholders, and we'll be.
Well, our, our focus is collaboration. We don't go out and do things ourselves necessarily, every member of the group that meets is a member of another group, and that's, we just sit around and have the meetings and report on what's been going on in each group, and come back next week and do the same, and give what advice and encouragement we can.
Where do you have your meetings at?
We have them at the library at nine o'clock Monday mornings, at the White Room until within the sixth, we have to do it in the conference room, because some watercolor society is having the White Room that day, but we're trying to keep it there, keep it free, and the meetings last, well, it's an hour and a half, and we're out the door. So, you're welcome to come.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right.
Would your group be considered a viable stakeholder for our stakeholders?
I would think not, at this point anyway, because we don't have a chair, we don't have any organization whatsoever, and we kind of like it that way, so.
Meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas, happy-
Merry Christmas.
Let the festivities begin.